Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board and I'm calling this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order at 6:32 on Monday, January 7th, 2019. Does any member of the board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
Approval of minutes.
The minutes are behind and we will pick those up at the next meeting.
Okay, good, yeah, I didn't look at any. Warrants. First I have check warrant number 20 in the amount of $273,786.18.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Art.
Say that.
Seconded by Ken. Items over $1,000. $1,600 to Bennington County Sheriff. $1,200 to G.A. Bow Fuels. $9,100 to Greater Heights Trees.
That's going to be reimbursed, that's part of East Road Paving Grant.
Oh, okay.
We're taking trees out of the way to get better light onto the road.
$245,000 to Russell Construction Services. $2,100 to Sycamore Landscaping. $1,500 to TAM. $6,700 to William E. Daley. Those are the major items, any other discussion? All in favor of approving check warrant number 20, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, check warrant number 20 in the amount of $273,786.18 is approved, 4-0-0. Next I have Retirement Warrant Number 2 in the amount of $9,418.98.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Art, seconded by Joe. Joe? Any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, check warrant number 2 for Retirement is in the amount of $9,418.98 is approved, Are there any announcements?
Next selectman's meeting will be here, or do you know when, how long we're going to be here?
Oh, we're going to be here probably till after town meeting.
Okay, okay, so just to let everybody know.
Okay, so we're continuing to meet in the library at the school while construction is happening at Cole Hall. I would also remind people that we, now is the time to raise your hand to serve on the Development Review Board and the Planning Commission, there are open slots before things expire in March, and we also have several members who are up for reelection, so if you would like to serve, all we need from you is a letter of intent to serve, or a letter of interest to serve, which can be as simple as an email to David Kiernan, the town administrator. There is a hearing on bylaws, zoning bylaws changes that will be happening on Friday, January 18th, at 5:30 here at the school library. That is the first of two select board hearings, we've already had one Planning Commission hearing, these are for zoning bylaws changes relative to motel, to housing conversions, relative to short-term rentals like Airbnb, and also a recommendation by the Planning Commission to remove the table of uses at the front of the bylaws, from the bylaws.
I believe that meeting will be at Cole Hall.
That one will be at Cole.
We will have that in the list, it's obviously Cole Hall.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's at 5:30 on the front.
Yep.
Is that a selectman's meeting?
Yes. It's a special meeting, just to keep the timing sequence.
That's Friday, 5:30, when?
The 18th.
January 18th, yeah.
May not be able to make it, there's a, Chamber is having their annual dinner that night, so we better make sure we got.
Make sure we get a quorum for that, yep. Okay, any public comments? No? Okay, Treasurers' Report, Melanie Dexter. Hello.
Let's see.
Oh, let's see, I have amended from 1231, is that the one you want to see?
Yeah, sure. Let's start with that, the only change there is that there was a voided check, so it changed the bottom line, it's not important for us to go into it, but that was the only, I had to amend everything because of that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this is, this is December. You can see there's a lot of money moving around, that was getting the money that was owed to the general fund back into the general fund, that $192,000, then, and then that, the one below that, the 120, no, two below, $127,000, that was some more garage money that was due to the general fund, so that's, that was a requisition from the bond bank. We also just did another one, was it yesterday?
Yeah, the other day, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the eighth and ninth requisitions, so that's what that represents. Nothing else particularly out of the ordinary going on there. You can see there's a nice, nice hefty chunk of delinquent tax came into.
Oh, okay.
Let's see, also in December.
Oh, there they are, right there, yeah.
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 Also in December, I did the town appropriations, you see that down the $312,000, that's, that's the voter-approved appropriations, so I got those into the reserve account, so there's money going back and forth. The balance of school tax, you saw, you see, got paid, so what we're looking at now is our actual cash that we've got for the remainder of the fiscal year, is that $580,000. It's a little bit lower than it has been at this time, and there's, as I say, it's just cash, it doesn't really matter, it's, it's just, maybe this time last year people had not cashed their checks as fast, it's, it's not anything to be concerned about, but it is a little bit lower than I've expected, so I'm going to stay on top of the money due to the general fund and make sure that that doesn't build up. It's, it's a little more complicated this year just because of the garage bond, so I need to stay on top of that. Any questions about any of that?
Yeah, I'm a step behind there, so you're saying their cash balance is $580,000?
Yeah, that's our real, that's our real cash, because there's none of the school, school taxes in there anymore, so that's, that's our actual operating cash for the rest of fiscal year.
Okay, but that, that's not all the money we're going to need for the rest of the year, right?
Well, we get some more, some more revenues in too, but.
Oh, that's right, we're halfway through the year.
Yeah, but when you get down to the bottom, you'll see where we are versus last year, but, but, but as I say, this is just cash, it's not, for the budget, we're looking pretty much right on schedule.
Mm-hmm.
So if you want to look at the, comparing this year, this year to last year, we are, as I've said the last several meetings, our revenues are a little bit ahead of where they were last year, and our expenditures are a little bit, also a little bit ahead of last year, but within kind of margin of error.
Okay. Yeah, just kind of threw me, we're up here with cash available, four million up there, and went to 500,000 really quickly, yeah.
Yeah, that's why you really want to, want to look at.
But I know a lot of that is school taxes.
Yeah, the budget tells more the story than, than cash, than.
Yeah.
And that's right, pretty much right where we want to be for budget.
Okay.
But the, but the money that we borrowed for the garage is not part of that 500,000?
No.
Because that's, that's still, that's still.
That lives in the reserve account.
That's right, exactly.
Until we, until we spend it, so, so you just approved a warrant for $280,000 or something, most of that's the garage, as soon as I write the checks, I will transfer the money over to the general fund.
Yep.
You can see that the balance of the funds as of December 31st, you can see the reserve fund is, well, that's about where it's been lately actually, and the garage bond, it says it's at 512, that's actually, since we just got our acquisition yesterday, that's down to around 260 or something like that.
Yeah, 262,205.
Yeah, yeah.
Now which reserve fund is this?
That's, that's all the reserve, that's the, the one bank account that has all the reserve money.
Okay, okay.
Including water.
Okay, so all of the reserve funds are in that?
Yeah, right, if you want to pull up the reserve fund spreadsheet.
I don't have a recent one with me, sorry.
The December one is out there.
Let me look back and see if it was in last, last week's, last time's meeting.
Well, I can.
Yeah, it's another thing, wouldn't be the right one.
We've got 1217, is it?
Yeah, that's not, there was one for 1231, but it may not have gotten in, it's, it's fine, I mean, all it does is take that $1,046 and divide it among all the funds.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And the only reason it would be mildly interesting is that it shows where all of the voter-approved appropriations happened, but we can look at that next time, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's all right.
I think that's about it, I've been really busy with all of, all of those end-of-year things, but we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, okay. So you have end-of calendary year things that?
Well, yeah, we had to, we had to do the voter appropriations we do before the end of the year, returning people's overpayments on tax happens towards the end of the year, and then all this bond stuff, it just happens to have landed between Christmas and New Year, so it was actually a really busy week. Oh, the other thing is that, I don't know if Dave's going to watch out about this, but we, I did the final changes that the auditors requested for the external audit, just today, so he's promising us the financial statements.
By the end of the week.
Okay, yeah, which is a lot later than, than it has been in other years, and later, clearly later than we wanted it to be, because it's late for the town report.
It's late, it's late, because part of our contract is to have it included, we have a final copy, so we can print it in the town report, so we're kind of pressuring them like what happened. Normally we would have this in December.
Yeah.
And we just did a lot of adjustments this morning, so, we will have it by the end of the week, and then it's just minor tweaking we'll do from there. We'll have it in time, but we're going to speak to them about, make sure this is December, you come and, you know, they're coming in September now to go through the books, being a half month later, come on, let's, I think we got bumped down the line a little bit.
Yeah, I think that they.
It's not, it's not the contract, so.
They feel sure of us as clients now, so I think that maybe newer clients are, you know, taking precedence, but we really need to, yeah, stay on about the schedule.
Yeah, they're out there looking after the real crooks today.
Getting duped. But, but it was supposed to have gotten easier over the years too, because we're doing it every year, right?
I think, I think that it's clearly easier from our point of view, yeah, I think it's easier for them too, I just think they did a lot of work up front, and then they're playing catch-up now, and they just didn't do anything for a couple of months.
We'll have to ping on them a few times next year to make sure, between September and November, so I asked them a couple of times, and everything was moving along, and then it was the end of December, and it's, it's had to report.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Anything else from Melanie? Roads Report. I guess our foreman is home getting an early night's sleep, because.
Yeah, I think the roads is going to have a very early morning tomorrow, probably for the next couple of days, it's supposed to get colder and pretty much snow each day now for Tuesday, Wednesday, and possibly Thursday, so they're basically, that's what they're doing, they're getting trucks ready, they were out today, taking some trees down and removing some trees that have fallen over. The basic plan now is to work our way through the winter, we're working on trees, and we're going to address, address some ditching issues if possible, you get into the frost and everything else, which can make it a mess later on, it might not hold properly. Michael and I are working on the plan for what we're going to address next year, I mean, we have a lot of grants, we have a lot of grant money we have to go through before July 1st, and I've already secured a couple of grants right after that, and we have the Hollow Hideaway Bridge, we have to start and get that out to bid, so, we already have a very active schedule, but we're looking to implement the plans we were talking about, about the ditching, concentrate on rebuilding the basics of the roads, the ditches, trees, trimming, and work on the surface, but a lot of it is replacing old culverts, bringing the ditches up to, up to par, and cutting a lot of trees. So far, we've had Greater Heights out working on White Creek Road, that's where they were, and the work there, they've done a lot of work on East Road, but I tied that into the East Road Paving Grant, because we're bringing daylight to the road, it can be part of the grant, so we did it that way. But we are going to be using the full $15,000 to take down a lot of trees this year, or at least trim a lot back, and we're looking at renting equipment, as we've talked about, to start trimming everything back more, renting being a lot more efficient than trying to buy one of these pieces of equipment, so, but we'll go into those plans with Michael as soon, so.
Mm-hmm.
But basically, we're on the, you know, snow coming, and that's what they're getting ready to, and I'm sure he is home getting ready to get up at 2:00 in the morning to see him, which is snow.
So the $15,000 is additional to the $9,100 for Greater Heights, or?
Uh, $15,000 is what's in the, in the budget for this year, but we've only spent, actually I just got the group, the bill for White Creek, that was only about $2,000, so we have about $13,000 that we're going to go at in the spring. We've made a list, Mike was driven around with them to different areas where trees really need to go, or the canopy has to be cut back significantly, so that's where a lot of that will be going. $15,000 doesn't go far, relatively.
You know, when we bumped that up to $15,000, we were looking at Jim White, our forester's list of dangerous trees, is that what we're talking about here? Are we talking about roadside trimming?
Well, this is, it includes both, really, just trees that just have to come down, and we did get a lot of them taken down by the power company, but there are lots of trees to come down, and lots of trees to be worked on, so $15,000 will go pretty quick, we are also, I have a webinar coming up with the ash borer, and the problems that's going to cause, and the state's looking for different towns to join, kind of a group to try and jump on it, concentrate, pay attention to the ash trees, and if you see a problem starting, if that area can be addressed rapidly, it can slow the spread of this apparently, and they're hoping that if enough towns participate, they can be slowed enough to some other method could come in, rather than just losing the trees, some, one of predator form or something, you know, some other bug that's going to take care of them, but that's all.
Yeah, I've been to one or two of those meetings on the ash borer, and it's, it's really a, it's, it's a, it's a tough problem, I mean, what we're trying to do with the slow, with the, with containment methods, first priority is, or, one of the reasons to, to try the containment methods and slow it down is that there are people who have forest lands that have valuable trees on them, that it gives them a chance to, to cultivate on herbs, and make their money off of them ahead of time, but then, yeah, then the other part of it is, yeah, we're just hoping for a miracle of science to come up with a cure, but the long-term prognosis short of that is, they're all, all the ash trees are going to die.
Is that through the VLCT, or?
Hmm?
The VLCT, is that where we're getting this information from?
Uh, the one I went to was State Forest Department, State A&R, I forgot exactly what division, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been to one, and Michael's been to one, and this is a new thing, I got from Buzz and Willow up in the A&R today, so we'll see what plans we can put together, might as well be proactive on it, and if we can detect anything here, do our part to try and slow it down.
Mm-hmm. All right.
I guess the one comment I've got is that, in looking through that new manual, it isn't a new manual, but they, we just got it, on the roads, what the state, what the state wants us to do with roads, they want ditches below the base, and so, ditches have got to be two feet deep, we just need to be telling people, we're going to have to ditch in, in front of their house.
And it will, you know, the, but the bottom line here is that a lot of the ditches and a lot of the roadside work has fallen well behind, so some people are going to be shocked when we first go through.
Yep.
And we're going to be very active at that all next year, it's going to be deeper, wider, and roadside, trees have just grown into the town right away, which we need to keep the road apart, but once we clear it, reline it, seed it, and stone it where needed, it'll grow back in, you'll have that open road that'll stay stronger, and it'll reduce the amount of mud and everything else we're getting on it, because the, although most, most of our roads also need gravel surface, if you don't really address the entire project, the gravel is just more money being wasted away. But it is, we've done it in a few places before winter set in, it does shock a few people, but give them a little time for it to grow back, which around here isn't that long, it'll grow back, and you'll appreciate that, hey, your road's staying together, and it'll just be better overall. The roads have grown in, there's no doubt about that in some places, so, it'll be a change, but then you'll see the better part of it.
All right, anything else on roads?
I was down over at Creek Road the other day, and you can see the difference, where that has been trimmed back into brush and the trees, it really looks good.
Yeah, and part, part of that is, we're, you know, you can go out with a chainsaw and whack away, or you can get professionals who will address the tree problems without making them look terrible, you know, if you do it correctly, and they prune correctly, and they cut back correctly, it does what we need it to do, and it still leaves the trees an acceptable front yard. I have trees along my roadside too, and I would be unhappy if someone came up with a chainsaw and just hacked them down to be quick, you know, so, they're coming out nice on East Road, you still have an ice canopy, but they're great cut back, it gets a lot more sunlight, which is going to be very helpful at this time of year, the sun dries up the road quicker, less ice is always good.
Yes?
As far as the ditches go, you're talking about going deeper and wider, what if your residency land is kind of on an incline as is? That's going to create a lot more erosion for property, is there any chance of having, say, any of the, the stones from the landscaping or whatever, be like built a partial retaining wall to hold that property from eroding?
The property, the private property coming in down towards the ditch?
Yes.
You know what, I wish Michael was here, I'm going to defer that to our road foreman, because there's ways of addressing that, you know, in the ditch itself, at a certain pitch, we have to stone line it, it's required on the state rules, I don't know exactly how that would be addressed, or how they want us to address that, or work with the homeowner, but a lot of times when we do this, when we run into situations like this, or sometimes there's trees that look like, you know, they're great trees, and they're your trees, but they're really growing right where the ditch is.
Yeah, we don't have an issue with the trees.
Yeah, well, we want to talk to the.
Quite an incline.
Yeah, we want to talk to the homeowners, when there's something like that, we want to talk to the homeowners before we go digging away at it, because it doesn't help us if your slope falls into our ditch, we're right back where we started from, so, as we go around, when that comes up, there'll definitely be knocks on the door, we don't want to, it's going to be a little bit different when people see what's going on, but we don't want to, you know, shock them and, you know, take down stuff without them knowing, yeah.
I've seen a lot of the ditches have been done with a stone, which is a nice look.
Yeah.
But like I said, you know, a lot of those properties are more on a flat plain versus, you know, where we live, we have quite an aggressive gain to our home.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, and you were talking about culverts, our culvert is very dire meets at the end of our driveway, so, there said, we don't have any tree issues, we just have the landscaping issue.
Landscaping issues, yeah.
Because, you know, right now, we don't, it's been situated long enough that there is no erosion there, but we certainly don't want to get into.
Mm-hmm, and like I said, that doesn't help us either, if you start eroding into our ditch, it doesn't, we haven't solved any problems, we just created two, so I'm sure that would be looked into before the work was done.
And where, where are you?
Grove Road, 115 Grove.
Grove, okay.
I would hope that when the road crew went to a place like that, they would work with you guys and try to blend it in, so it all looked nice, and did what it was supposed to do to get the road. It's not to our advantage to aggravate you guys, we're supposed, we were supposed to try to work together.
We haven't been there very long, so we have done some improvements to our property already, but now, what you're talking about may impede what we've already done to increase our property, split rail fence and lilacs, and stuff like that, so, you know, and that's only since this past summer, so.
Well, they did a lot of work further up on the road a couple of years ago to improve the drainage, I mean, they were there for three days, working on, you know, increasing the drainage, because it was eroding the road.
This is Grove?
You know, that they.
We're right across the street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, they cleaned out culverts, and they cleaned out the whole side of the road, so that, you know, there was better drainage at the end of the road.
Yeah, that was about two years ago?
Yeah, we had the heavy rain, and it washed into our driveway basically, the road came to town. Yeah, so it washed out our driveway, so, except they were up there for three days, cleaning out the side of the road.
Okay, okay. I made a note here to, to let Mike know that we've got some concerns from the landowners at 115, was it?
Correct.
Yeah. Yes, sir?
Yeah, to expand upon this, my name's Mark McKen, and I live on, you know, 712 Myers Road, and, you know, the, the way that Myers has been maintained over the years is when it turns soft, you know, and they come up and they, they pour the rock and gravel on it, spreading it around, and the ditch is filled in to the point where there is no drainage, you know, my property drains, you know, north to south, so it drains towards the road, and right now, my front yard is essentially a frozen marsh, the water's out of a place to go, we had a little rainstorm a few days ago, I've got water pouring in my basement right now, and it's a real problem, and I just want to, you know, get on the record that, you know, with these plans for, for ditching, sooner rather than later, it would be wonderful, because I've essentially got no room to house, you know, when Hurricane Irene came through, I had to water my basement, I get water in my basement every time the rains, the snow melts now, it's out of place to go.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we, I've spoken with, I mean, we went up there, and we are going to look into what we can do, I actually talked to Mike about this morning, so we're going to see what we can, what we can do to alleviate this quickly, this is not the ideal time of year to do any of that.
Of course.
But, we're, we're going to take a look and see what we can get rid of now to finally alleviate something.
You know, in addition to the comments about, you know, the woods growing with the road, Myers Road has spread out.
Yes.
Years, you know, I had a tree that several, eight years ago, was 12 feet from the road, now it's five feet from the road, the tree has moved, it's just, it's just, you know.
Right.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, no, we're going to be bringing them back in, we've got to.
Yeah.
That, that's the problem when we, whenever they turn to mud, we just brought in stone, and the state is saying, that really is not the best way to do this.
Yeah, then we have a number of roads that have expanded like that, and really, again, it's just not really solving the issue, like, you know, Airport Road is a prime example of people driving further out to get away from the mud, so they just keep pushing the road out, and the road has to be brought in, and resurfaced, and the ditching done correctly, and, you know, that's the goal, and that's what we're planning on. It's going to take a little time to get around to 70 miles of road, but we're going to address the more difficult spots, your road being one of them.
Okay.
We're well aware of that, we were actually up there last year with the state engineers, trying to come up with a solution, one, one part of yours is the tree canopy, where we looked at taking trees back 10, 12 feet on either side of the road, but there's still, you know, so many more, when we were up there in winter, you still couldn't get any sunlight on the road, so.
Yeah, this, this one tree I talked about, that, you know, it used to be 10, 12 feet from the road, now it's five, you know, I've realized that's probably got to go, and that's okay.
Yeah.
But the main thing is, I've got, I've got to have drainage, and that's, I can't do it myself, and I'm suffering.
Yeah, well, the tree may not need to go, like Art was saying, a lot of it is the, the road has gotten too wide, and a lot of what is now road used to be ditch that got filled in, and if we, you know, come back through and ditch properly, we'll probably be ditching where, you know, now there's road in a lot of places. Anything else? All right, we're moving on to our FY 2020 budget, we're looking to nail it down tonight, Dave?
Oh, no, this is just on here for community appropriations, which.
Okay, remind me when we have to drive the nail in the coffin on that?
Next, next meeting will, will be it, unless there's anything that comes up, I usually don't like the final. I usually don't like to final vote on it as things get tweaked towards the end. But essentially, what we've gone over is the full budget. The only open-ended one is Bankton Rescue and, Bankton Rescue.
Yeah.
Everything else is in.
So we'll be needing a special meeting or two as we go toward the end of the month?
I don't believe so. I think everything is wrapped up this year.
Because don't we have to nail it, I mean, we've got to warn the budget before the end of the month, right?
February 4th is the latest, last state of warning. So the meeting on the 21st would be the one where we would just approve it.
That's a regular meeting.
That's a regular meeting.
That be right?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, 21st, okay.
January 21st.
Yeah, I've got my dates off. Yeah, this is the seventh. This is our first regular meeting, even though we've met masks.
Sure.
That's why I wanted to have the meeting last week, just in case there was anything out there that was missed. But I think we covered the entire budget, so we're just pretty much ready to go. A few tweaking of numbers as some estimates come in, but nothing of a major.
So what do we need to decide about community appropriations?
I was on there just in case I got any last minute requests. And as you remember, we were going to have the gentleman from WBTN in. But as board decided that petition was required there, and I did communicate with them over the weekend and this morning, they are going ahead with their petition for 100, Martin told me it would be 135 signatures they would need. Shasbury registered voters, and that doesn't seem to be a problem for them. I pointed out to them that the last time they were funded was in 2016 for 2000. And that was voter approved, but there hadn't been a request in 15, 17, or 18. So it's kind of like a new application when you drop out that long. So they're fully thanked. I provided the information, the wording. It should be provided in by statute or recommended actually. And they're going to go for the signatures to get it on.
Okay.
And it was 5,000?
5,000, yeah.
Voters can vote on that line by line?
Yeah, that's all line by line. All community appropriations are line by line. So if they get to 135 signatures, we'll put it on the ballot, and voters can decide whether WBTN gets $5,000.
But as we exercised in our last meeting, the select board can change the amount that anybody requests before it even goes to the ballot. And if the organization does not agree with that, they can petition the voters for the amount, full amount that they ask for. Okay. The last item then on the budget is to decide on the Bennington Rescue Squad funding, not finding. We had, we met last week. Yep. Forrest Wayan of Bennington Rescue was here, gave us, talked it through with us. Tony, who is on the Bennington Rescue Board and a member of our board, was here at the last meeting. He's not here tonight. The number we have in the budget right now for Bennington Rescue is 25,000 for the year. I think it would be helpful if we got a motion to set that amount, and then we can debate whether or not to change it. So can I get a motion to set the Bennington Rescue Squad funding at 25,000?
I'm-
Moved by Ken. Can I get a second? I'll second it. Okay, so the motion then is to fund the Bennington Rescue at 25,000. So we can discuss whether or not to change that.
I'm not comfortable with a vote tonight without Tony here. I think he should be part of this. He's on them. We specifically asked him to be on the Rescue Squad Board so he could give his feedback, and he's not here.
All right. We have a motion from Art to postpone the vote on Bennington Rescue Squad funding.
Table to table it?
Postpone. Table requires that we have a vote to bring it back up again. If we postpone it, we can bring it back up again at our next meeting. So we have a motion from Art to postpone the Bennington Rescue Squad vote until our next meeting.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we will postpone that. Anything else on the budget we need to talk about?
No, that's it. I've not received any more community appropriations. Everyone is in what we expected to be in. It was on there really for BTN because they wanted to come speak tonight, and conditions changed. So that, and the budget, like I said, is, it's pretty much set. I don't see anything different. The budget for fiscal 2020 will be less than the budget for fiscal 15, so.
Yep. And Dave, I want to thank you for all the years of squeezing that turnip and keeping the budget flat this year. We are going to have to raise it a little bit. We've got very specific areas where things just have to go up, as well as just, you know, playing some catch up on inflation in a number of areas. But you've done a good job, and I think we can be proud that we've held the line for as long as we did.
Excellent job.
Yeah.
Clarification, the motion stands even though we postponed it. We don't have to make the motion again.
Correct. Next time-
The motion.
We can bring up the motion as an agenda item or as a part of the budget discussion.
Yep, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so there is a motion before the board.
We don't have to do that again.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it has been moved and seconded, so as soon as we, I guess we, yeah, as long as we schedule, as soon as we schedule it, it becomes active again. All right, we've got a couple of regular items here. Liquor licenses for places that we grant year-long liquor licenses to regularly. The first one here is for pollen. And so is there a motion to approve the 2019 liquor license for Pollen Inc.?
So moved.
Moved by Art?
Seconded.
Seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the liquor license for Pollen is approved 500.
Page two, this move.
And the second one is for timetables. The caterer there on Church Street. And is there a location associated with this one?
No, they require this to be signed just so they can make it stay in business and offer it as a service.
Okay.
Most of the locations are rerouted out of town, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the 2019 liquor license for timetables?
So moved.
Moved by Art?
Does it?
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the liquor license for Pollen, for timetables is approved 400. Okay, item 11, Town Hall, Town Garage, Coal Hall update.
Okay, this is our basic placeholder for the two projects going on. Not a lot has changed. You know, other location, the work is proceeding ahead. The garage is getting close to the end, probably the interior within a month. As I said before, the site work, of course, now has to wait for some fair weather to be finished. But I don't anticipate any change orders or anything else. We're really down to just finish up things inside. I mean, the interior construction has to go on, but that's all very well designed in advance. So the biggest decision today was where to put a plug on the back wall. We have to pretty minimal things.
I'm sorry, you're having to decide where the plugs go.
And the room color, believe it or not, came up again, so.
Oh, geez.
So it was bringing that up. Coal Hall is progressing nicely. We've had a few people in. We like the way it's coming out, that we preserved all the historical aspects inside. The tin ceiling is unsticks touched through the entire project. And that is moving along, but we'll probably be in the trailer for another four to five weeks if everything continues to go smoothly, but it's construction, so who knows? But everything is going along, and it's, they're both coming out pretty good here.
Windows part of the overall thing for downstairs?
The windows is a different contract for next fiscal year.
Okay.
We were hoping to do it this summer, but summer turned into winter pretty quickly. So now that's up for next year. But that's not part of the original budget for the second floor anyway. That was when the rains started literally coming through the windows, the window frames, and flooding the sills. It was like, okay, it's on roof, not for windows. Those are easier because they're not historic windows. They're not the original windows.
Okay. So that'll be done after?
That'll be done, probably starting mid, end of June, finish up in July.
Okay.
But we already have that arranged. We just postponed the contract on that.
Okay.
Now, these are the first floor windows you're talking about?
Yeah, in the clerk's office and the list, now it's the listener's office. When you go driving rain from the west, the water actually comes in all around the frame onto the sill. It's really kind of amusing to watch, but it's time for them to go.
Yeah.
Probably time for them to go 20 years ago, but they'll know. And then, as we've discussed before, once we finish the interior part of it, we'll start looking at exterior upgrades. First thing probably the steps to the front of Coal Hall, because we want that to be the main entrance to the second floor. And for ADA, we have to adjust the steps and put a railing in, but that'll get going. And then we can discuss changing the front doors at some point, and exterior painting. And of course, the big plus is knocking the garage down.
Taking the garage down, thinking about what we do with that whole lot, changing the entrance, yeah.
Yeah. So, but we can start, it's something to start thinking about now and start, starting to plan out because the plan is basically the garage project is in its last days. And the planning and finances are all coming out on both projects, so time to start thinking about what's next. And again, we have these all saved in funds to do this work, so time to get it moving.
Yeah.
All right. Are you happy with the, with the garbage or the roadway down to where the dumpsters are and that sort of stuff?
Yeah, that roadway was fixed and brought up to the compaction like what it was supposed to be. Right now, it's a good surface, and the surface around the bay doors, new bay doors, we worked on a little bit. But that driveway now is not the finish coat.
No, that's right.
We're going to put the finish coat on. Just another, I forget, six or 12 inches, I forget what we're putting down. But what's there now has the fabric and a top coat, and then we're putting the finish coat on top of that.
Okay, good.
But yeah, it's pounded in. The original issue was resolved. We had it all dug up. And they put it back down with our engineer. They have to test compactions so that we're getting what we wanted.
Okay.
And I have to buy a little shed for the transfer station for the compost. So that's probably 2,000 that we need to put in there. And again, for some people, I sometimes, the swap shed, we'll get to that. The swap shed had turned into a bit of a-
Collection.
Collection. Yeah, that's a nice way of putting it, so.
That's a very nice way of putting it. Sounds like good stuff.
But we want to try and draw it back to what it used to be, which was kind of books and useful things. You know, one ski is not very useful, you know.
To a one-legged man.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we've had some odd things. And it's like, it is kind of strange because I've worked the transfer station some days when Shelley's been out. And you turn your head for a minute and there's something by the door, and you're like, where did that even come from? It's like, and you look at it, you're like, nobody wants that. Somebody just didn't want to pay. So now essentially, the town's paying for it, so.
Well, it's between not wanting to pay for it and thinking maybe somebody can use it.
Yeah, there's a lot of-
Not wanting to throw things away.
Yeah, yeah.
I find myself with that sometimes. Oh, you really got to get rid of it. But it's like, oh, somebody might want this thing. And it's not, not so much that I'm trying to save $2 to throw away. But that's how, I can see how it can buy it.
Yeah. And, you know, some of the stuff that's brought in, there's just, you know, a better place for that might be taking it down to Goodwill in Bennington, where more people go to look for this stuff. I mean, there were things on the shelf in there that were there before we knocked it down. Were there for the whole six years I've been here. And some of the stuff's been there since Shelley's been there. So, you know, it's, it was just getting a little out of hand. We have to bring it in. So when we build a new one, it will not be nearly as large. And we'll have a little bit more control over what goes in. And I'm sorry, thanks for the intention, but maybe bring that down to Goodwill because it's just getting to be too much.
Was that the road you were talking about all through there, about repacking it?
Yeah, from the road when, when, things got a little out of sequence, shall I say. And we had to open the transfer station before we intended to. And it led to a very muddy road that was installed, and we had to have it completely pulled out because it was not done with, to the specs that we wanted. So now it is at the specs we wanted, but it's not finished. The road was going to finish the top coat because it's cheaper for us to do that.
Well, thanks. I noticed that the other day.
Yeah, it's a little slimy still, but.
Yeah, well, that's bound to happen till the top coat goes on.
Right, right.
It's kind of a rough time of year to finish up with this, but we'll get through this year.
Yeah. Okay. Any other business?
Yes. Um, we live behind Daleys, and it's gotten increasingly loud. Um, not only early morning, but late at night, in the middle of the night, through the night. And I don't know if Shasbury has noise ordinance, but, um, I mean, there are times in the middle of the night that there's banging over there, loud machinery. Early morning, like 4 o'clock in the morning, I mean, 2 o'clock in the morning, I mean, I mean, it'll wake you up. Um, I don't know if Shasbury reinforces a noise ordinance, but, I mean, people on Mountain B Road can hear it. Um, it just seems like something needs to be done.
We can certainly talk to Brian Lant, the manager over there, who is a Shasbury resident. And that's come up once or twice before. Usually it was a change in their schedule that caused it, where it caused them to need to be doing things at night. The last time it was because they were opening doors because it was hot in the summer, and that caused some noise, so.
Do you remember they tried to move some things indoors to try to alleviate some of this?
Yeah.
A couple of years ago.
I know, because I came here a couple of years ago, you know, and I spoke with Brian Lant. I went over there and spoke with him, and he said that they removed, you know, some things that they were doing to the other end of the building. But, you know, recently, you know, it's just gotten a lot worse.
Okay.
And, you know, I don't know if they're working 24/7. I mean, I don't know if they're doing 24/7, but a lot of times they are. Um, and, you know, it's keeping people awake at night. And, and, yeah, but windows closed. And I know one of my neighbors, she couldn't be here tonight, but, you know, he says that you can't even sit outside in the summer, you know, because it's so loud. And, I mean, is there a noise ordinance in Shasbury?
There might be. What we can do, what we've done with other businesses with complaints like this, we'll go back to the original permitting process and the Act of 50 permits and see if there's any time restrictions on them.
There should be a decibel limit, right?
There may be if it was put in when a lot of this was permitted, but a lot of Daley goes back a long time.
I was just going to say, I think, I don't think that they're under Act, they had to go through an Act of 50.
It wouldn't have been 50, but maybe, and that's kind of a long, because say you are talking about somebody who's been here forever, maybe we need to-
I mean, they probably predate zoning even here, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, it was 78, so there's a-
So, yeah, I don't know that we have a noise ordinance. We have zoning requirements, but if they're grandfathered in, we may not be able to bring the hammer down. But like I say, Brian has been real responsive when I've talked to him in the past about issues like this, so we'll talk to him.
It was my understanding that Pecamore owns that now.
Correct.
They do. Pre-fab.
Yeah.
So I'm here representing my community, but my wife and I moved there August 2017. And prior to us buying that home, there was nobody living there. And we spent 10, possibly 10 different times, spending hours at a time sitting at that property, enjoying the peace and quiet, because we come off of Eaton Lane in Bennington. And it, since we've been there, I would say the first eight months of being there, we had peace and quiet. It has turned into worse than Bennington. Absolutely worse than Bennington. Um, and we pay good property tax. You know, we moved to this community for the peace and quiet and the high rating that Shasbury had. Now, I can understand- Now, I can understand if it's daily being grandfathered in, but if another company takes over, then they should all enter a different guideline.
No.
And
No, it goes
It was also my understanding that the bid, the business or the building itself was enlarged. Now, this is just from hearing different people talk, that the building has been increased in size. So that the berm that was created for a noise barrier does not work for the size of the building. Now, where we're located, we're above them, so we're on a hill, so we can actually see plain of view where the building is now. So all that sound comes directly at us. Now, they have vibration units that run for hours at a time. You know, I get out of work and I get home at five-thirty and I listen to this thing up until eight, nine, ten o'clock at night vibrating. It sounds like it's in my driveway. My wife is woken up in the middle of the night, two o'clock in the morning. It sounds like steel plates have dropped on the ground. Okay, banging, cement mixer's running all the time. Now, if I was to live in the city and deal with road traffic, they have barriers that are built to protect their communities from the sounds of the highway because those are placed there that are necessary. And I'm not saying that business is not necessary, but they should have some, some type of, something in place to protect the community from overpowering sounds. And they have the capability of building bridges that are fifty-two feet long or sixty feet long and they're able to increase the size of their buildings. They should be mandated in some way to create some type of sound barrier to protect the community that's around them. Because like Carol has said, it has increased over two times the amount of sound that we get. And it's not just until ten o'clock at night, it's two o'clock in the morning, five o'clock in the morning. I get up, five o'clock in the morning and I listen to backup alarms and cement mixers and all kinds of stuff. In a community like that, we should not have to hear that kind of noise. And it's not quiet, it's very loud. And, and, and as she stated, and other people in our community. If we're looking at that kind of sound in winter time, what's it gonna be like in the summer? You know, my understanding, they have gotten a huge contract for the Tappan Zee Bridge and that's why they're producing so much. And I believe a lot of times they are running twenty-four seven. So where's our protection being in this community and paying the taxes that we deal with to live in such a community and have to deal with that kind of sound like a big city? That's only one concern I have, but.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I really feel for you. I grew up in North Bennington next to the, the train station, the north of Shaksbury, but I know all about noise.
Well, I love the trains myself, but it's periodically.
But, but I, I was gonna say, I mean, I grew up with it, so even, it never bothered me, not once.
You hear those in the winds, right?
Yeah, yeah. But what, what
But that's okay.
I think what you have to find out is, but what's an acceptable decibel? Uh, when, even for, for a construction crew like that, what, what's an acceptable decibel that they can produce, uh, compared to where you live?
Or like even set for our scheduling, you know, if they have, uh, things like they need to vibrate a form. You know, maybe they need to reschedule it and do it toward a normal time of day to where maybe in the evening, they're setting up for forms or setting up trailers towards the evening time to where they don't have to do a mass production at that time.
I think production and planning have to get together on that and figure that out. I, I would, I would look into, uh, sound, sound decibel as far as what's, you know, by law, what's an acceptable, you know, uh, sound that's, even if you had a meter at your house, just to, just have it outside, inside, whatever, just get it, something to, to put on the table and say, look, this is what I have for a decibel. You know, for, for noise at my place. And if, if you go to, uh, Peckham's and hold a decibel meter and you can kind of have some, you know, kind of show something that, look, it's ninety-one decimals at, at Peckham's, it's, you know, thirty-one decimals in my yard. That, that could be too much.
I, I kind of think though, when your vibe, when your windows are vibrating from a vibrator, that's a half a mile away or a quarter mile away on the hill.
It's pretty excessive.
Or if a steel plate is dropping, it feels, sounds like somebody slamming your door, I would say those decibels are a little high. And I'm not saying that happens constantly, but enough that it becomes extremely annoying.
It's kind of a catch, uh, twenty-two in a sense that, you know, you've got a legitimate gripe that there's a lot of noise, but at the same time, I, I really feel blessed that the economic engine is up and firing, you know, that there's actually jobs out there and things are happening. Um, but it shouldn't be at the expense of your
And by all means, I'm, I'm all for work.
Yep, oh, yeah.
Keeping people employed, you know, but there are things that can be done to protect the community. And unfortunately, it shouldn't be at our expense.
Well, like I say, let me talk to, uh, to Brian and see, uh, see what's going on there that might have increased the noise and see if there is something that, that they can do. And like I say, the easiest thing is for Daleys to fix it and that's, in the past, that's, that's been what's happened, so let us have that discussion.
Uh, it might be a time that, uh, there was a huge building and if you just close the doors, the, the overhead doors on either end, that we won't be surprised what, how much that would say to you for noise.
Well, like I say, that's worked in the summer, but I'd be surprised if the doors are, they're working with the doors open in the winter.
I'm wondering if a lot of the work is done outside as well.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think, well, they might move materials in and out, but I don't think they do any of their work outside, by knowledge.
I know that unit stress down in Massachusetts.
Yeah, I, I used to work for them.
And they have outside canopy units that they can pour their, they can set their forms up, they can pour their concrete, they can do all their stuff outside of their facility.
I, I don't believe Daley has any of that. I don't believe they have any of that down there.
All right, let's, uh, let's go on. Is there any other business?
I have one more.
One other issue, yes.
Is there an ordinance for, well, I think they used to call it like junk, uh, abandoned vehicles? In a, you know, um, I forget exactly, Bennington had one that weren't allowed to have like plywood and abandoned vehicles around your home. Does Shaksbury have something like that?
Yeah, all you need to do is call the zoning administrator and tell her the address you're talking about because you can have no more than, off the top of my head, I believe it's no more than two unregistered vehicles on your property, uh, so she can look into that.
Zoning?
Zoning administrator, yep.
When, Wednesdays and
I'm sorry.
What are the days?
Oh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, nine to twelve. Or you can just email her too.
Okay.
If you just give her the address, uh, or leave and leave it on my phone, um, you can just check it out. That's, that's easy to do. But yeah, it's, it's, I believe it's two, number one and two unregistered.
Any others? Dave, do you have anything else?
No.
Anybody on the board have other issues they want to talk about?
Dave, one, uh, I hate to harp on it, but what are we getting rid of that dodge?
Well, it's a troublesome question.
Uh, again, this is something that, as we move on a little bit further, I mean, the goal here is to reorganize and repurpose the entire highway department and entire highway fleet. And that's an issue that, uh, we discuss. We're looking at various equipment, the right-sized equipment, get rid of equipment, uh, change things we do. Uh, I can't give you a deadline for removing the dodge or whether removing the dodge is actually the optimum thing to do. Uh, we, we're looking into every aspect of what we should do. And when we're, have something together, we'll bring it to the board. There are a lot of variables, a lot of things we're trying to take into consideration. Uh, everything from ability, the ability to take certain objects to certain areas, be able to take certain smaller sized vehicles out to where we've left heavier equipment. Flexibility, there's just a whole lot of things on the table when we look at this. Uh, I think the general consensus is that, or at least between Mike and I, that we don't have the right equipment for a lot of jobs, that we need to change some things to make them, some things more efficient and, um, the general operation altogether needs to be what I've been saying for, for years, uh, better planning, better, you know, maximum use of the equipment we have and, um, renting what we should be using instead of, by purchasing things to sit around for ten months out of the year. So we're working on a plan to present that'll cover all that stuff, but I don't wanna set a date on.
No, I didn't, I didn't mean that.
No, I know, I know. I, I know the thing is a, a problem.
That's about the biggest problem we got in the fleet.
Well, I could name a few others. Uh, you know, even as we, in the capital plan, we had a single axle to be replaced this year, uh, fiscal twenty. But, you know, we have questions with that too. Maybe that's not what we're gonna ask the board to approve, so. But this is bringing in, like I said, this is the whole point of bringing in someone with experience from the outside to look things through and bring their expertise to it to try and right-size everything and get the proper procedures in place so that we can operate more efficiently. And as we operate more efficiently, we don't need some of the things we have.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's gonna be a process. There's not gonna be quick answers to a lot of this stuff, but I think we're starting on the right track.
No, I think, uh, totally, just, I would, just
No, I know, but, uh.
I got a bug about that thing.
Yeah, well, that's kind of like my Ford.
Ken wants to buy it.
Yeah. Two cents, baby.
Yeah.
Uh, Joe and Ken were here when we talked last, last meeting about the, the town having a seat at the, uh, DRB in Act two fifty hearings, that's all.
Um.
I, I just thought we should, I should explain it to them.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, the, with the Shire's building down the road, um, there's gonna be a lot of meetings, uh, where DRB and Act two fifty and the town is a, is a, uh, participant.
Yeah.
Because, and so, um, I think it's prudent that, uh, Tim be the spokesman so that there's just one person there, but also what we can discuss at meetings, what we want, uh, to have done and that sort, that sort of stuff, okay? Um, one of the things that, um, was brought up at the first DRB meeting was the, uh, fact that the road is gonna have to be brought up to state, to certain specifications because we really haven't done anything from the North Bennington Inn through to where Perrin Road goes off, Perrin Acres Road goes off, so that's all gotta be brought up to state standards and we're asking, we're gonna, looking into what that's gonna cost for materials and so on and so forth and possibly ask Shires for some help.
I think some of that should be narrowed up down there. I think it rolls to one, somebody should
Oh, yes. We're, Mike is having an engineer look at it right now.
Yeah.
There's drainage problems and concerns and that sort of stuff.
Yeah.
Also, okay? But all that can be discussed at a board meeting and brought, and one person will take it so you don't have to. We'll take it to the, to the meetings, okay?
Yeah, but that would all be discussed amongst us before
Absolutely.
That's right.
Before he went to the meeting.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, um, we did discuss that last time. I was just bringing up the map here to kind of frame the discussion. So, uh, oh yeah, this is kind of, there's, there's Perrin Acres up here. And there's McCarthy Road here. So the project was originally setting here and they have moved it down to here.
Yep.
More or less. And Shires has said they will pave from the entrance to their project down to where you hit pavement down here at Houghton. And, uh, what we were, what Art's raised concerns about is, um, you know, the people that come out of the apartment and turn right instead of left, that we're gonna increase the, the traffic on Perrin Road, which is through a wetland. And we've had problems with Perrin in the past. Um, at the last DRB hearing, Art and I were both there, um, and, uh, I expressed the, the, uh, the, the good things about the project in terms of raising the tax base and the need for housing in the area. And Art brought up the concern about the road and, uh, so those, those, uh, you know, both of those, uh, ideas are out there. Uh, since you brought it up, I've been thinking about how to, how to tackle this problem. I'm not sure what the answer is. I think, you know, one answer is, uh, you know, we're gonna have to spend more on maintenance on a regular basis on this road if, if, if it goes up. One thing I started to wonder, and I'm not sure it's a good idea yet or not, is what if we paved all the way up to Perrin Acres?
Well, you're gonna have an estimate for basically everything we were talking about before, ditching, moving trees and leaving it gravel and upgrading it to having it paved. Uh, that's the estimates we've asked. Uh, Mike was out with the state engineers this morning.
On Perrin Road?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We're doing it this morning. We also have questions about the culvert. It kind of troubles me, the, uh, impervious surface area that's supposed to drain into the existing culvert that, uh, you know, we asked the state to right-size that and see if their calculations come up with the same size culvert. Because it's all gonna collect their lot into our ditch to try and get underneath the road.
Move your cursor down just a little bit. Okay, uh, you know, that's, that's, uh, where does the project, where is the project? Right, right about
Project is right about here, I wanna say. And so they're paving this bit right here.
Right about where your cursor is, there's a culvert that goes underneath. They're gonna put a, uh, settling pond right about where your cursor is right now. And the overflow from that is gonna go into the town ditch, go, go through a culvert underneath the road and they said goes into the wetland. Yes, it does go into the wetland, but it goes into the railroad first. And then it has to go into the wetland on the other side of the railroad. So we wanna make sure that that culvert underneath the town road is sized for that settling pond overflowing.
Yeah, but that percolate is gonna add a lot of water.
Yes, that's what, that's
It's a large surface area, so it has to be, uh, taken into account. The existing culvert is just to take the road water off now. I mean, Mr. Rice's property doesn't shed that much water there.
No.
So we're talking about a, a lot of square foot of, of pavement draining into that existing culvert, so.
And they sized it for a ten-year, ten-year storm and we've had hundred-year storms in the last couple of years, so. Just one, a little bit concerned about that.
Mm-hmm. Well, the, the, what got me thinking is, you know, this project is gonna add, their current estimate is like two-point-seven million will be the tax valuation of the property because it's based on income. It's not based on what they spend to build. Um, which will add somewhere between eight and ten thousand dollars a year to the taxes we collect, uh, just from this one project. Now, uh, if we, you know, that's, you know, eight to ten thousand dollars more a year, we could spend it all on Perrin Road if that's what, what was required there. Uh, the other thing I was wondering is, you know, does it make sense to, to pave the, more of this road? You know, if we got all the way to here, um, could we get all of these people here in Perrin Acres to, to drive this way? Um, even if we couldn't get them all to drive that way, at least they'd have that option when the road is bad because it does regularly get, get bad.
If you're My, my opinion is if you're gonna pave anything, you're gonna pave out the other way, out towards
Pave here?
Yep, out towards the railroad tracks. And, and I'm not in favor of paving right at the moment. I think we gotta get the base, we gotta get the base and the culverts right and everything. And then, then you can pave anytime you want. Once the, once the base, the fabric and the top coat are established, you can pave anytime you want.
Right.
And not have to redo it.
Right.
Yeah, but if they're, they're doing the project now, it shouldn't be up to the town to pave that road. When I, when I was road foreman, they built Perrin Acres and I tried to get the slick men to make the developer pay for that, pave it that. And they never did. They never considered it. But when they put this in, that should be paved at the time that development goes in there. It's right up to the rest of the people in town to pave that road.
That's, that's, that's one point of view. I mean, there are a lot of other places that take a different point of view. I mean, uh,
Well, yeah, they're doing it now, Tim. They're doing it now.
If you want to attract business to your town, uh, it's, uh, a, a lot of towns are, you know, a lot of cities. Look what New York did to get Apple to move there. They didn't tell Apple they had to improve the road, uh, or Amazon. They gave, uh, Amazon five billion dollars of taxpayer money. So, uh, you know, uh, yeah, there, if a new project comes in, you can expect them to help. They've already done a lot. They're paving the road down here. Um, maybe they should contribute to, uh, the effort to, to, to this point here. And that's what I was wondering, you know, if, if for example, they would pave all the way to McCarthy, could we pave all the way to Lake Road if that were a good idea? And then really the point of thinking about it that way is they're bringing in tax revenue. There's an additional $9,000 a year. If we wanted to pave that, you know, we could, it doesn't mean we have to pay for it out of $9,000. We could pay, we could borrow for it and, you know, pay $9,000 a year on a loan that would allow us to do that if that was the thing we wanted to do.
What about oil and stone? Isn't that cheaper than the pavement would be? But it's a better base than?
It is, but it doesn't last.
Well, true. Does it last better than hard pack what you have now or?
Well, I, if you're going to pave a road with regular asphalt, number one, you've got to have a proper base underneath or you're wasting your money. And number two, normally, I'm not in favor of paving the road unless you've got so much traffic that you don't have to park a grader there. Uh, because you can go ahead and lot a road for the money that it costs you to pave a road. But these guys are doing it. If they wanted in there, I think they ought to pave and pave at least from McCarthy Acres down to the railroad, down to the end of the existing pavement down there.
Well, I've seen, I always say that because I've seen oil and stones a lot.
Yeah, well, when I was.
They run out of New York a lot.
Right.
And that actually holds up pretty good.
It does. I mean, if it's, but it's still not as good as regular asphalt.
Oh, I'm sure it's not, but it's sure better.
But it's a lot, a heck of a lot cheaper though.
Yes. And if you're using, you know, um, the regular Sure Pack that they're using now.
Yeah.
It's better than that too.
Yeah.
And eventually, as you keep adding to it, whether it's a year maintenance or every two-year maintenance, you're creating more of a base.
Yeah, you have to, you have to stay with it. You can't let it get too far behind you because then you're, you're going to lose it all.
Right. But at least you don't have to come back and repair cracks.
Right, right. You can't, you can't.
Sinkholes.
You've got to keep it maintained very well. Yeah.
But Dave, what you're telling us is that, uh, our new road foreman is, uh, out there with the state looking at the situation right now, evaluating several options.
Yeah, we'll have a few options before the, the next DRB meeting for the board to review. And basically, the directions as we discussed it was, one, you know, regular construction cost, quality, what's it going to cost, you know, on their best estimate to do it completely correct from one end to the other, paved gravel. And that includes the ditching, de-sizing culverts, replacing culverts if needed. You know, give us a realistic bottom line here. What, what would be the total cost of this project? And then, then you can make up, look at solutions from there. From everything from what you just suggested that, you know, the additional tax revenue can be used to pay down a bond to do part of the project. Uh, you dedicate the future tax revenues to pay, pay a bond off, a bond for a, and have it paved using a bonding fund. Or you just look at, see where they come up. If it's, if they think that with enough tinkering with the road, we could maintain a gravel surface, then we could go that way. But, uh, you know, right now, I'd say let's, let's see what the engineers come back with and, yeah, we want something. You know what they're saying, but we just want to see, let's see what the state actually says it will take to keep this road up to snuff.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Ken, I didn't mean to dismiss your point of view. I certainly agree that if, you know, a couple, somebody's going to come in and do something, build something in our town, it's going to cost us.
Right.
Uh, an arm and a leg for the foreseeable future. We've got to get some compensation for that. Um, my real thought here is though that, you know, Perrin Road has been a problem for years. We know we need to fix Perrin Road. Uh, and here's a case where we can, you know, uh, get much-needed economic development if we'll just pick, fix Perrin Road. I think there's a, there's a balance that has to be struck there between, you know, what is our responsibility and what is the responsibility of this, uh, you know, economic development that's coming in there?
Well, I, my, my main thing is, Tim, I, I, as a general rule, I'm not in favor overall of paving roads if I can help it because it's just so damn expensive to maintain it and everything else.
I agree with you, yeah.
But the problem here is you're putting 22 units in a really concentrated place and it's going to be very hard, at least in that area from where the development's going to go to the existing block top, to try to make that maintained.
Well, recall that, uh, part of the development plan was a road study that was done by engineers who said it's borderline whether or not it, you know, you need, whether or not you need to pave Perrin Road. Um, and like you, you know, if it's borderline, my inclination is don't pave it because.
Yeah, but, well, I bet it could. Two years ago, they, they took, I don't know how many miles of road, turned it from pavement back to dirt.
Yeah, because when the time comes, 20, 30 years from now, when you have to repave it.
Yeah.
You're looking at, you know, a half a million dollars.
Right, right.
Well, let's, let's see what, what the engineers, the, the problem is, is that there's going to be a DRB meeting before our next selectman's meeting.
Yeah, I, I asked that this be done as quickly as possible. And I can distribute it to the individual board members. The board will have to decide whether or not to have a special meeting to discuss it before the DRB meeting.
Let us know when you get it. Send it to us an email. We'll, we'll look at it and talk on the phone and see if we need to get together and talk about it. Okay. Good. Okay, uh, action items. Uh, going back a couple of weeks, um, did we ever get closure on what's happening on Glastonbury Road?
Still working on that. Uh, we know all the parties involved. We're still doing our upper end. Uh, and a contractor is, is helping the state in the middle kind of unofficially because the state always gets up there so late. Uh, but that contractor was the contractor that we'll tag on to if he gets an official thing. Uh, he was just submitting piles of documents that was submitted to me trans.
Just to, just to do business with him?
Yeah, just to do business with him.
So, right now he is paving it or?
Well, he's helping, he's helping his neighbors out.
Okay, okay.
But we get up and do our end and he's not occasionally. But we're just going, whatever he gets from the state, we're just going to tag on our 300 feet on the end.
All right. Um, cemetery funds, I know you've been really busy with a lot of construction. You probably haven't had time to dig through.
No, and, and I doubt, I don't think Rob has either because we really need to coordinate it. But it's still the basic target of, of that one odd fund that's there for land and equipment, neither of which we need to be converted either back into a perpetual, one of the perpetual funds or at least for our use, growing, uh, not Greenwood, uh, Grandview into just have one perpetual care fund instead of the two.
Right.
And the other odds and end, the health fund, see if we can disband that and things like that.
Are we, uh, any hope of getting fund changes on the ballot in March?
No.
Okay.
That's just not going to happen at this stage.
Okay.
Uh, but we have the funds we need to do the cemetery work, so we can just move on.
Yeah, they're mostly housekeeping issues. It would just be nice to.
It's stuff that we should be doing on a routine basis, but it's glad, it's good that it has brought this to the fore again. We really have to rationalize a couple of these funds. Uh, it's just some of them are a little difficult. The wording and how they were set up makes it a little bit difficult, but we'll, we'll take care of that.
Okay. Well, let's you and I make a, make a pledge that we'll work on this and.
We have to get it around.
Get, get it ready for the next ballot, which will probably be, uh.
We could do it in, in November.
March of, uh, oh wait, this is 19, so it's going to be March of '20 before we have another election?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right.
All right. Um, the, you and the Parks Committee still working on water for Howard and Cleveland? Any news there?
Uh, well, actually I have a list of equipment. We're going to buy, or, or playthings. We're going to buy the swing sets and things like that. And I'm just going to order them, see if they can store them. If they can't, I'll find someplace to put all the boxes until we build it. It's a good time of year to buy equipment.
For the Shasberry, uh, Cleveland Ave Park or?
No, for, uh, Howard Park. We're going to build a, a, a playground in Howard Park in the spring. Uh, a new playground that'll be near the pavilion. I'll have, uh, two swing sets, uh, roundabout and a slide. Uh, but you need the equipment, you need a contractor because we just don't have time to do this. Because you have to dig out a base for it. You have to get special material to put down as the base and, uh, you know, it'll be nice when it's done. Garbage cans, recycling cans, uh, and the water fountain.
Yeah. So, are we still, so we're definitely going to have one for Howard by the spring?
Yeah.
Cleveland Park?
We haven't gotten that far with, uh, but I do like the idea of coming, when you come down Cleveland on the side of the park, house services go in there and link on to the delivery system on that side. It'll be a little longer run for us to where we want the fountain to be. But unfortunately, and of course, the main one's on the opposite side of the street from the park. So, we don't want to dig through two sidewalks and or go underneath the whole road. It's just not worth it. So.
Right, right.
Uh, Jim and I were talking about that, but with the holidays and everything else and.
Okay.
But yeah, we're still going to, it'd be nice to have a water fountain there too. Probably should.
Are they ever going to replace like the monkey bars they took out of that playground?
Uh, you know, monkey bars are interesting things. Uh.
Great for strength.
Yeah, there's all kinds of odd things we can have in there. We haven't really looked at that yet, but, uh, there are things we could put in there. We'll take a look at it.
Yeah, because I mean, I realized that kind of went away and nothing ever came back. My daughter used to enjoy playing down there and it's.
Yeah, I mean, those were, those were good. When, when I had them taken down, uh, I know somebody was upset because their child had played there, but their child was down there with their child. And it's like, well, that's why it has to come down because, I mean, there's rust and jagged pieces on it. And, uh, basically all that came about because when I took this job, I called the insurance inspector in and, uh, he was like, you better start shutting this stuff down because, you know, it's not up to code.
I remember, I remember the big slide they had. Somebody went in there and welded it.
Yeah.
What, you know, to make it safe again.
Yeah, yeah. So, we got everything fixed and everything's perfectly, you know, buried the way it's supposed to be. There's enough padding and everything, so.
What about the ice skating rink? Is that going to go to Howard Park or is Cleveland?
Uh, you know, I think it, it belongs, it would, it'd be great in Howard Park if we could control Howard Park, but we can't. Uh, so I think maybe, this is some for the board to decide, but I think maybe going back to Cleveland.
Yeah.
Leveling out Cleveland because the part, the problem there is, again, this is finding time. It's not so much the money, but it's, it's the time to find, to level the whole back area out so the rink can be erected back there with the warming shed. And then it's right there, we have a power source there too, which is helpful. And, you know, we could have the ice rink there and people could walk to it in the park. And when it was closed, it wouldn't be a big hangout. People wouldn't be skating in the middle of night because people live right there. You know, that's unfortunate aspect of Howard Park is it's secluded. And people would be playing night hockey down there and we'd have all kinds of.
Well, I think the, the skating rink's much more likely to get used in Cleveland Park than Howard Park because people like Joe will just walk, walk down the block to it.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. And what I was saying was it was used quite a bit in its first few years. And then, you know, because it was so uneven and things, but you can correct that if you level it off.
Well, what do you need the select board to decide to do?
Well, if you want it in the park, I'll put it in the park. It's just what's supposed to add. If, if that's where you want it, then that's where it'll go.
Make a motion.
Yeah, we have an, our, our motion from Art to go ahead and, what is it, have the, the road crew do the leveling?
Uh, no, we're going to have to hire a contractor for it. It's just too much time and stuff.
Okay.
Uh, but it's still manageable. If it's planned, it's manageable.
All right. Why don't you get a budget for us on doing that and then we'll, we vote on it?
Won't be this year though.
Uh, it'll be '20. It'll be before next winter hopefully.
Oh, yes, before next winter, yes, yes.
Because we have, there's, there's, there's places. Uh, there's a big request to the town too that generates interest. So, you know, uh, four parks. So, most of that was dedicated to Howard Park, but it frees up, money dedicated to Howard Park also frees up money for Cleveland Park, so.
So, do we have enough in that, uh, fund to do that? Or do we need to think about adding to the 2020 budget?
Uh, it's, it's not all that expensive. It's really getting the material put in and getting one of the local guys other than us to bring the vibrator out and pound it in and level it off. It's really kind of, it's just material flattening it and compacting it and throwing some seed on it. And then we can, uh, put the ice rink up. We'll put the ice rink up, but, uh, you know, and then we can maintain it because it's really just getting your, the handheld Zamboni and you just go up and down. They have to make one now, so keep it smooth, you know. But, you know, it's, it'd be a nice thing to have there, I think.
Okay. There's a motion.
What?
Did we vote on the motion?
Um, what is your motion?
To have the ice skating rink at Cleveland Park as opposed to Howard Park.
Oh, okay, yeah. Uh, we have a motion from Art to reinstall the ice rink next winter at Cleveland Park and not at Howard Park.
Second.
Second by Ken. Discussion on that point? Um, do we, uh, what I was suggesting is we wait until we have a cost on that and then, uh, include that. But, I mean, if it's just a matter of deciding to do it at Cleveland Park.
Yeah, if you give me the direction to do it, I'll just bring in the costs. I'll work up some costs.
You, you got the money anyway, right?
Yeah, well, we could find money somewhere. Like I said, it's not going to be a huge project.
Yeah.
The biggest part is I have to buy a new liner, which is about, I think it was about $2,800. Uh, and then of course, when we start assembling the parts again, which have been in the warming hut for three seasons, you know, there might be parts that need to be replaced there too. Uh, but leveling the field, the material for the field, it's not like buying the very specific material to be used for a playground. This is just fill and compacting it so you have a level surface. So.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not the best amount.
All right. Any more discussion on the, the question of Cleveland versus Howard? All in favor of putting the ice rink in Cleveland, say aye.
Aye.
So, by a vote of 400, we have directed the town administrator to proceed with reinstall, reinstalling the ice rink at Cleveland Park.
Okay, waiting for next winter.
Okay. Um, we have an action item from tonight to, uh, let Mike Yannadi know that, um, when he gets around to ditching on in or around 115 Grove Road, that they've got concerns about the, uh, the slope into the ditch there. So, that's one we can let him know about ahead of time so we don't get, get surprises.
And if you look in that manual, it's got drawings on how to handle that. You, you don't necessarily have to dig a ditch. You just have to make sure that the water coming down is drained some way. It would just crush stone or something.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that they have to dig, we have to do a big ditch.
Okay.
A steep bank like that might be better with stones on the bottom just because that breaks the flow and then it can just start running in the direction it needs to.
Yeah, it's.
But there's, you know, that, that book's been around. Uh, this is the updated one and, you know, it's just following it.
Yep.
It's really just following.
There are several diagrams in here that I have.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, good. Uh, and then, um, I will, uh, talk to Brian Lant about the noise going on over there.
Gotcha.
See what, uh, see what's up and see if there's something they can do about it. Anything else? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second by Art, seconded by Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned.